Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Wednesday, October 16th, 2024, meeting of the Gaithersburg Planning Commission. Welcome, everybody. Nice to see you. First up is our approval of minutes from, well, actually, we have two sets of minutes, one from September 4th, 2024, and one from September 18th, 2024. I assume we can approve those together. So is, if there are any questions on the minutes? No questions?
No.
Okay. Motion, please, then, for the approval of the minutes.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the minutes of September 4th, 2024, and September 18th, 2024.
Second.
So moved in second. It all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And that passes unanimously. That takes us to our consent agenda, and we have one item on that tonight for SP-9290-2022, Extension of Final Site Plan Approval for 14 First Field Road in the MXD Mixed Use Development Zone. That was a final site plan approval, and again, this is an extension on that final site plan approval. Any questions on the consent agenda?
Very straightforward.
Is there a motion, please?
Cross their fingers.
Okay. Andy, is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the consent agenda that's presented to us this evening.
Second. So moved in second. And all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That passes unanimously. All right, so that takes us to our site plan agenda, and we have one of those tonight for SP-9786-2024, Final Site Plan Approval for a 4,959-square-foot Sheets Retail Building and Accessory Automobile Filling Station at 16529 South Frederick Avenue in the C2 General Commercial Zone. This is for final site plan, and presenting from staff is Kinar Johnson. Oh, that's right, you guys are now on the, thank you, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. Staff is before you to present final site plan application, SP-9786-2024. The application is based on the concept site plan that was approved as a part of the annexation application, X9510-2023, that was approved by the mayor and city council on October 16th, 2023. The subject property is located at 16529 South Frederick Avenue within the Walnut Hill Shopping Center. The applicant is requesting approval for a 4,959-square-foot retail building for Sheets and accessory automobile filling station. The application was reviewed under the zoning ordinance in effect at the time of submission in accordance with Section 24-1.2 of the 2024 zoning ordinance. This application comes before the planning commission in accordance with Section 24-168 of the previous zoning ordinance, which requires the planning commission to grant final site plan approval. As part of this application, the applicant is requesting two parking waivers, four standard parking stalls that do not meet the city's required maximum 17 feet in length and maximum nine feet in width. The planning commission has the authority to approve parking waivers pursuant to Section 24-222A. The applicant is also requesting approval for Final Forest Conservation Plan, ENV-9843-2024 pursuant to Section 22 of the City Code. Staff received two additional correspondences today, which is labeled Exhibit 12 and Exhibit 13 in the record. The agenda was updated, and an email was sent to the commissioners. Hard copies are also provided for your review. And today, we have, as the presenter is Pat Harris, is the land use attorney for the applicant, and she will present the Sheets application.
All right, good. Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you. First of all, I love your new setting.
Dancing.
It's very nice. So I'm Pat Harris with Lurcher Liam Brewer here on behalf of the applicant Sheets. With me is John Idberger, who's the entitlement manager with Sheets. We have Andresa Dalnesky and Mike Berkland from Bowler Engineering, Jake DiPiazza, who's representing with, he's with Granite Canyon Partners, and he's here on behalf of the ownership of Standard Properties. And then we have our traffic consultant, Nick Dryden, and as well as a few other representatives from Sheets. We're very pleased to be here and to be at this point in the process, and I really want to thank staff who has guided us through this process from start to finish. It started with the annexation, which coincidentally was approved exactly one year ago today by the mayor and council. So as staff indicated, we're here for the site plan, the approval for the southwest corner of the property to accommodate the Sheets. It will include six canisters, 12 fueling stations, and 32 parking spaces. The commission's very familiar with the site, but I will briefly orient you. Before you is the location and vicinity map with North Frederick, South Frederick Road, along the frontage of the property, Southwestland to the south, and the Northwestland Drive to the north. The property is currently, and, well, here's the overall aerial of the property, and then we have even a closer site area. You can probably tell from the aqua in the aerial that these are old aerials, and we have some new pictures that we're happy to be able to show you. The current zoning of the property is C2. It came into the city with the C2 zoning, which is the general commercial zone for the city, as you know. And here is the actual pad site area is going to be in the southwest corner of the property. This obviously is an older picture, as you can tell from the facades, and I think it's interesting to compare it to the new photos, which show you. I have a couple more. This is the Aldi grocery store, and as you can see, it's a little bit old because it says coming soon. We hope that you were all able to go to the grand opening in July. And I will say that Aldi is very, very happy with the site, as are the neighbors, and I think it has done exactly what we had said to the mayor and council and the planning commission more than a year ago, that it would activate the center, and it was really going to be the anchor for the redevelopment of the center. And I think it has definitely proven to be all those things. And then here are just a few shots of the various facades within the shopping center. So as staff indicated, the proposed site plan is for the pad side area, which is 57,851 square feet. Well, let me back up. This was actually in connection with the annexation agreement, which was approved a year ago. There was a concept site plan that was approved, and that laid out three parameters. Those parameters are those that are on the screen. It identified the approximate retail pad side area, also that the building would be between 4,500 and 5,500 square feet, and there'd be six canisters and 12 fueling stations. And in fact, what was approved, this is the concept plan again, that was part of the annexation agreement. It was an exhibit to the annexation agreement. And then now we are zeroing in on the actual site plan area. The site plan itself includes 57,966 square feet of area. The building itself is just, is 4,959 square feet, and we do have, continue to show the six, the six fueling canisters and the 12 fueling stations, as well as 32 parking spaces throughout the site. The, the, oh, we're, so, I'm sorry, I got confused here. We're requesting, oh, sorry. Let me go back. In connection with the site plan, we're requesting a parking waiver. So actually, a little bit unbeknownst to me, at least, I didn't realize that in the city the standards for the parking are precise. It's not a minimum. And so the parking requirement for length is 17 feet. We are proposing 18 feet, and that's, Sheets' standard is actually a 20-foot-long parking space. So we reduced it from the 20 to the 18, but we feel like that extra foot is really necessary for safety purposes and to accommodate generally larger vehicles and compact cars. So all 32 spaces are proposed to be the 18-foot width, sorry, 18-foot length. And then we have, are requesting to, a parking waiver for the width of two of the spaces, which are for the air pump. And as you know, when people put air in their tires, they need a little bit more room to maneuver around the space, and so that extra four feet allows for, for safe area to do that. So two of the parking spaces are proposed to be 13 feet wide instead of the required nine feet wide. The landscaping plan includes street trees along the southern, or the, the western border, southern, south, page south, but the western border along Frederick Avenue, as well as other landscaping throughout the site. And then in terms of the green area, there's an overall requirement for the entire shopping center, the, the parking area be 10% of green area, and the ultimate proposal here is 12.33% of green area. We are here as well this evening for the forest conservation plan, and the engineers are here that can go into more detail of that if you have any questions. And then we have the facades, we have the north elevation, and these are, this is page north. The north elevation on the top, and then the east elevation on the bottom, which includes outdoor seating, and then the south elevation, which is the frontage, what's on the top of your screen is what will be seen from Frederick Avenue, and then the west elevation at the bottom. And then here's a picture of the canopy. And overall rendered site plan. And then back to where we started, which is just a perspective that was prepared early on. Actually, this was part of the annexation agreement, but I think it, you can tell from the facades of the building that it actually portrays an accurate depiction of what's there now, but for the pad site. So with that, we're happy to answer any of your questions. We look forward to getting the rest, this final piece of the shopping center completed. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think it bears, just, just for clarification, that you were talking about the length of the parking stalls. I believe all of them are off of drive aisles that are not just wide drive aisles, but then there's even space beyond that because you're into the pad of the filling, the fueling station area. So it's a little bit of an artificial, you're not really constrained when you back out, essentially, like you would be on a traditional double-loaded drive, drive aisle. Is that fair? So the length of the parking spaces are almost kind of...
Right. It's a line on the pavement, and it is what it is going to be, I think, is your point. That is true. But I think the sense is that if you have the lines, the sort of delineating the length, that it, it's, I think it's a visual cue as well.
Oh, I agree. Now, my point was that in, in terms of standards, I think it, it imagines a constraint of a, of a narrow drive or a specific drive aisle.
Right.
That's in constraint on the other side by another row of parking. And this doesn't have that, so it's a little bit of paint. There's nothing really about the geometry of the parking that's, that's.
That's absolutely right.
Per se.
That's correct.
Okay. Any questions? Go ahead.
I have a couple. I have a couple of questions. The one is with dealing with, there's two questions I have. One is deals with traffic, car traffic and foot traffic, because that is an area where people use the, the buses quite frequently since 355 is an arterial road. Did you have any statistics on, on what you think the usage would be of the facility there, both the gas and the convenience store?
Well, we certainly have counts, and then, do you mean projections? And I'm going to call.
Is it going to be super busy, is really my question?
A lot of it is, I'm going to let our, defer to our traffic person, but a lot of it's going to be.
There's some technical.
Pass by. This is Nick Dryden.
Super busy, yeah.
Good evening. Nick Dryden with Lenhart Traffic.
Okay, thank you.
I think the answer depends on how you define "super busy."
Okay.
Yeah. The majority of vehicle trips are what we call pass-by trips. So it's, it's primarily traffic that's already on the road, already on Frederick, you know, Maryland 355, that's, that's stopping in to get gas or to grab coffee, or coming out of the neighborhood on Southwestland or Northwestland and, and coming in, or, you know, or, or at the grocery store, and they, they pop into Sheets. So, you know, I could give you, I don't know if you, specific numbers are meaningful, or...
Well, I know that, like, part of 370 loops right around there and drops you right in front of there, where there's been some traffic adjustment on 355 to accommodate that traffic. So that was really just my question. Had it been studied, and if so?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, we did. We completed a traffic impact study that was scoped with the city, and the city has approved that study. We've also, it's also been reviewed by State Highway because Frederick Avenue is, is a state highway, obviously, and then the county has also reviewed it as well. So.
Okay.
It's been thoroughly studied. I can tell you that all the intersections and site access points pass the city's requirements for adequacy.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thank, thank you. And then my, and I just have a question that's more from a, just a curiosity question, and it, it deals with the electric vehicles charging. And I am familiar that there is going to be another part on this infill development for a place for electric vehicles. But is there any, any future thoughts about putting in electric charging stations in existing gas stations at this point, or Sheets facilities?
So, good evening. My name is John Idberger. I'm an entitlement manager with Sheets. Yes, there is, we're always looking towards the future for electronic vehicle charging stations. If I can just kind of provide some information as far as how Sheets approaches that. So we, we work with third-party vendors.
Okay.
That provide and install.
Okay.
The electronic vehicle charging stations. We have the real estate, we have the parking lot. We're constant, we have agreements with these third-party vendors that, that are looking at our sites throughout our whole system. This is a site that will become available that they can look at. It's not there yet. The way the electronic vehicle charging companies look at it is they look at market penetration, basically, and they determine if it's a place to install electronic vehicle charging stations. So we make it available. At the end of the day, they have to look at their market presence and say, yes, we need to have electronic charging stations there. And then we'll work with them to figure out a location of the parking, parking lot to install those. So.
Okay, great. All right. Thank you very much. That's it for my questions. Mr. Chair.
Any others?
Mine's a loaded question, so I'll say.
Just, well, we're, we're at questions right now.
Okay.
Yeah, if you want to go ahead and...
Well, yeah, maybe it's facetious. But, so the landscape plan is, I'll call it lean, right? So it's, I think, forestation totally makes sense, but the, there's large swaths of sodded areas on really two of the main, you know, large presentation sides of your project, right? So to dress it up as much as possible, I can't imagine that Sheets thinks that 20 feet of sod is a good sort of initial presentation of the project as you pull into the parking lot. I'm wondering if the team has been looking at planting those areas with something a little more aesthetic or not.
So let me, let me respond, and then I'll turn it over to John. So one of the things we did do, and it actually was approved in connection with the site plan for the overall shopping center, was the, at the corner, there's a landscaping area. The frontage of the property ultimately is BRT, dedication area.
Yeah.
And so while we're planting street trees there, or trees in that area, at some point in time, that's going to be taken up and devoted to the BRT.
And I would, and I would fully accept the idea that you don't want to block your signage. But the, the large sodded area that's, you were saying, planned, I guess, west, so planned left on your parcel, is just a large grass sodded area with very little change in grade. It's, it's really ideal for a large garden bed. It's the main entry to the site, really, right? And it's going to get all your car traffic, no, hopefully no pedestrian traffic because it's, it's not a mid, it's a mid-block entry, but it's going to get all your auto entry. It's a lot of grass, is my point.
On which, I'm sorry, Mike Berkland with Bowler, the civil engineer, and I'm not a landscape architect, but we are the landscaper.
Yeah, you know, plants. You're okay. The, so, page left, right, on your lot. I don't know how else to describe it. There's a large sodded area that jumped right off the page at you, not hidden at all.
Are you talking about the frontage along Frederick?
No. So as you explained, you don't even really control that. So.
Oh, I'm sorry. So is it this?
Page left, yes.
That's, that's.
Right there.
Okay.
And then if you can toggle to the, to the landscape.
Landscape plan?
Yep.
So I know the, the plan meets the, you know, the city's requirement for, for planting. I can address on the one area to the plan north, this area here, there's a drain inlet, it's a, it's a sump condition. So that's the reason for that there. There is a, a walkway along here on the side, near the side.
Yep, all the more reason, right? So there, there's a large, flat, no utilities below it, piece of grass. I'm going to call it 20 by 100. It's a big piece of grass. It's the main entry to the site. Seems like a lost opportunity to me. It's like saying, oh, we don't need to put up a sign. Oh, we don't need to make it pretty. Oh, we can just, you know. It's, it's the main entry. Again, I'm going to say it again, huge piece of grass. There's no enclosures to planning that thing. I can't imagine you're going to leave it that way. I, I want to sort of, I'm, I'm kind of itching now to direct staff to sort of work with you on it, but...
I was going to suggest that we could work with staff on that. There's, there is several utilities that are entering there. We've got the sewer, the water, there's some storm there. There is some available places for, for, for added vegetation, I'll call it, whether it's low or.
So I think a tree.
Or mental.
Yeah, three, three.
Shubs.
Deep stormwater ban, you don't do trees. I get it.
Right.
That still doesn't mean grass, right?
Sure.
So, okay, great. Yeah.
Yeah. We could, we could, we could enhance that and work with staff to enhance that with some plantings to kind of soften that carbopale between the building and the tree plants.
And just to be clear, we've been, I, I think your elevations, well, I don't know, I may be wrong. North, north northwest is the end of the building we're talking about. And I think the elevations are labeled like east or south. I don't know.
Yeah, they could be mislabeled.
Well, what we realized, and I realized it this afternoon, is the R, and Commissioner Hopkins will know the term for this.
They're non-ordinal. So they're page, yeah, but, yeah.
It's, it's probably just, honestly, it's just the architect preparing the drawings, and it probably just didn't get to the point to say east is west and west is east.
Oriented to the page.
It's always the architects.
It's always the architects, yeah.
Yes, I learned something new this afternoon when I was looking at these.
But, but with that, I think it's one of the less flattering corners that's actually exposed because of this, too. So it would help soften what essentially is a main entrance into the center that you're, you know, backdropping with a service entrance and all. So.
Yeah, there's no architecture there, you know, and it is pedestrian path as well. So egress, you know, to some extent, but there's.
Definitely room, definitely rent to soften it up and add some landscape in there and work between the building and utilities and just figure out how to slot in some, some added vegetation.
Presentation, and hopefully more business for you guys.
Very much so.
I have a general question, and this is not strictly going to the site plan, but there was some local press talking about how compact this Sheets was. So maybe put that in context with the overall, like, our experiences with these, these stores and other places. Is this small? Is this more compact than ever?
It's smaller, yes. I wouldn't say it's the smallest site in Sheets, but it is, it is definitely on the smaller side, and there's some creative thought process going into this layout, which wouldn't be like in a normal Sheet store.
Does it, does it pre, compromise or abbreviate the level of service inside, or is this, you know, for, for an average customer, they're going to find everything they want here?
Yeah. No, it's not a reduced building. It's, we have a couple of different store sizes. This is more, I would call, like, a neighborhood version of a Sheet store versus a highway interstate version, if I could use those types of general words. So it's kind of geared more on the neighborhood side. We build this in other marketplaces, too. So it's, it's, it's a smaller version of a standard Sheets, but we're not compromising the offer at all.
Okay.
Sheer curiosity. So this is a 5,000-square-foot-ish. Your, your highway version is eight, nine, 10?
Not that big. It's, it's, the Sheets that we built up the road, that's over 6,000 square feet. And then if it was a highway, would probably be about 7,000 square feet because we have long-distance travelers, bigger restrooms, other matters like that.
Makes sense.
And a drive-through.
We try to do drive-throughs on all of our sites right now. That's probably one of the unique things about this site is just, the site is just small enough that we couldn't fit a drive-through on here. So, yes. We, there's other stores that we don't do drive-throughs on, too, but drive-through is getting to be more of a standard.
It'll work here.
No, not at all. No.
All right. Any other questions for the applicant's team? Is there anyone here that would like to comment on this application? Or is everybody here on the applicant's team? I think that's about right. Okay. And then let me check the online. And if anyone online would like to comment on this application, please hit the hand, the hand icon, and if it goes up, we'll let you, ah, it went up. All right. David Mullins, please.
Hey, thank you. I, I actually just ended up with a question just at the very end there because they mentioned the other Sheets up the road, David Mullins Gateway Apartments, and just, you know, enjoying listening and excited about the walnut. My, my dad goes to church at Good Shepherd across the street, Walnut Hill. It's looking great, and Aldi and everything. But the, is this, as far as like the neighborhood Sheets go, you know, it is proximity-wise, pretty close to the, to the recent one and that, that was built. And is that kind of a normal, I guess, neighborhood-wise? Is that, is this kind of the, the first of those, or is that something that y'all do normally? Just a curiosity thing. Thanks again for the info. Have a good night.
Thank you. And that looks like the only person with their hand up and the only question you got. So go ahead and address that, please.
Yeah, it's, I wouldn't call it neighborhood Sheets. Maybe I used that word. It is smaller. It fits more into a neighborhood setting. But when we look at our, our stores and our marketplaces, we do a thorough analysis, and there's things called barriers and convenience lines. That's how we kind of position stores, so one's not, you know, interrupting the other store. The one through the north has clearly got some clear separation lines to the north that, that this creates a completely different marketplace than the marketplace up to the north. So we drive the market for, you know, circles, concentric circles where the population bases, homework shop, and then we look for barriers that stop people from going from north to south. And then we assess the market even further, just to say, you know, from, from the, the offering of Sheets, how does it supplement into that marketplace? So that's, it's kind of a large answer to say this is a neighborhood store. But most of our stores are neighborhood stores unless they're out on a highway or interstate, too. So thank you.
Great. Thank you.
I see, I see in the signage exhibit, gas is $2.28 a gallon. Can we count on that?
I think it's, it's on the approved site plan.
Yeah.
They'll have to come back for. Condition number five. All right. Two quick other, quick session points. It looks like you've got a dumpster enclosure up on the, adjacent to the other entrance to the center. I apologize, I didn't rip through the presentation to find the architecture for that, but I'm going to assume, and there's no, there's no landscaping rendered. I actually don't have a landscaping plan in front of me, but, but that's another vulnerable spot for how it feels and looks. And I don't know if you control what's between the road and the back of that enclosure, but.
They do.
That's another, pardon me?
They do.
They do, okay. That's another spot that I think is, is important to look at with staff on the, the landscaping piece.
Sure.
And, and the condition, whatever the materials, and maybe you could just tell me, what, what is that enclosure?
So the enclosure is a little unique because there's a retaining wall there. So the grade, where the corral is, is, I call it trash corral, is several feet lower than the road. Part of that trash corral is, is nested into the retaining wall. Two walls of the retaining wall is the trash corral. Two walls are going to, one wall is going to be brick. That's going to match the, the, the building. It's architecturally tied in together with the store.
Brick on three, on all three sides.
Yeah, anything that's visually exposed will have brick. As a team, we actually were looking at the trash, trash corral area, the retaining wall, there's going to be a fence there. We were discussing about putting like a small evergreen hedge row up there just to kind of, I think I lost my, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. We were talking about putting some, some smaller hedge row evergreens in there just to provide some, some more visual presence.
Right, right.
Plus a visual presence. So, thank you.
A little less harsh at the, at the entrance. Okay, good. So I think, we're, we're in discussion. So I, I think what I propose is along with your work with staff, I think you were comfortable with that, Matt, to work with staff to work on the north end of the building. I'd say the south corner as well of the site at the, at the dumpster enclosure. Kinar, is that okay with you guys?
Yes.
Okay.
That's good.
So I think that's going to be another number four?
Yes, that'll be number four.
Okay.
For the, for the commission.
You want to, for the record, just do some language so it hits, it's in the record?
Sure. You can go ahead and?
Yeah.
Okay. So I would like to work with staff to enhance the landscape plan to include additional plantings along the north, northwest side of the project area to be approved by staff to, prior to issuing issuance of permits, and also to include that, the, along the south, Southwestland Drive as well.
Okay, great. All right. And then, so we didn't get to your recommendations, so why don't we do that for the record as well?
Okay. Staff recommends that the planning commission, based on the exhibits submitted, the testimony in the record, and the staff report, findings and recommendation, grant final site plan, SP-9786-2024, Final Forest Conservation Plan, ENV-9843-2024, and parking finding it in conformance with Section 2417-170 and Section 24-171 of the city zoning ordinance with four conditions.
All right. Any questions on the recommendation?
Can I just ask the applicant one more question?
Yeah, yeah.
So I think the landscape plan and maybe the architectural plan both note a roof on the trash enclosure, and it's not in the elevations and details.
So there initially had been a roof, and then there was concern that if you put a roof on the trash enclosure, you're inviting, I'm going to call it an attractive nuisance, but it's an attract, you're inviting...
Craters.
Usually children, kids, teenagers, to maybe access the roof somehow. And it was determined that ultimately, it was probably better off just having the top on the dumpster instead of creating a roof.
Yeah, I follow the logic. The grade's up there, so it's actually like at the top of the fence, the roof would be climbable.
Yes.
The roof was kind of at the street level.
Yeah, yeah. So I kind of follow the logic, so, yeah, thank you.
All right. Any other comments, concerns with the recommendation?
No.
All right. So we have a recommendation from staff for a motion, plus with four conditions. Is there a motion, please?
Well, I just wanted to, to go on record as saying that I really appreciate the move to increase the length of the parking spaces, if it's from a safety perspective, I really appreciate that. I also appreciate the entrance approach, it's not too short, there's enough space so people aren't flying in there, and, you know, that kind of thing. I really appreciate that, because it looks like you put some thought into the approach, and how people come in and out, and lots of cars coming in and out, so I just wanted to make that comment.
Thank you. Great. All right, anything else? I think we're ready for a motion, then. Please?
Mr. Chair, I moved that the planning commission, based on the exhibit submitted, testimony in the record and the staff report, findings and recommendations, grant final site plan SP 9786-2024, final forest conservation plan ENV 9843-24-2024, and parking waiver approval, finding it in conformance with Section 24-170 and 24-171 of the city zoning ordinance with the four conditions as read into the record.
Second.
It's moved in second. If all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes unanimously. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Bringing the whole team. Nice presentation.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Looking forward to seeing that last phase of the shopping center build out. All right, that takes us to, from the commission, where should I start? Carol, can I start with you, please?
Nothing to report this month, thank you.
Okay. And, and I know what will happen is, to listen to a transcript or to listen to a tape of this, we'll have to announce, I should announce formally, Carol Riggs, alternate is, alternate Carol Riggs is voting tonight as not all regular members.
I'm voting in my full commissioner status.
Exactly.
There's five, and I can be the fifth one.
That's right.
Not the fifth wheel, but the fifth one.
The fifth one, right.
What parties you go to?